It's six o'clock. You ready to go? Six o'clock. I'd like to call this Public Works on Tuesday, April 26. Okay, I'd like to call this Public Works on Tuesday, April 26. We're mending chapter 273 of the code in East Hampton. Mending chapter 273 of the code in East Hampton. We've got the streets and sidewalks and sort of limited maintenance and private roads. We've got the streets and sidewalks and sort of limited maintenance and private roads. I ask anyone to come up to the mic here three minutes. I ask anyone to come up to the mic here three minutes. State your name and address if you have any comments on this. State your name and address if you have any comments on this.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that.
Good evening. Thank you for all the time and effort that you've gone into Good evening. Thank you for all the time and effort that you've gone into keeping this in the forefront, trying to make a resolution to it. keeping this in the forefront, trying to make a resolution to it. But just from our point of view as one of the residents of Fern Lane, But just from our point of view, as one of the residents of Fern Lane, it just feels as though the rug is being pulled out from underneath us it just feels as though the rug is being pulled out from underneath us in the sense that the town originally promoted this road in the sense that the town originally promoted this road in this, that the subdivisions of half of the road in this, that the subdivisions of half of the road are fairly recent creations when there were subdivision regulations are fairly recent creations when there were subdivision regulations and there was no support to be sure that there was a mechanism to maintain the road. and there was no support to be sure that there was a mechanism to maintain the road. And additionally, the town itself originally paved the road. And additionally, the town itself originally paved the road. The road was dirt in 1960s. The road was dirt in 1960s. And somewhere along the line, I don't know the date, And somewhere along the line, I don't know the date, there is one resident who remains in the home that was built in 1962 there is one resident who remains in the home that was built in 1962 and the town paved the road. and the town paved the road. So to now come along and say So to now come along and say that we will not support further improvements on the road. that we will not support further improvements on the road, Just at this point, the rug feels like it's being pulled out from underneath us. just at this point, the rug feels like it's being pulled out from underneath us. Thank you. Thank you.
Trace Fishman, 13 Fern Lane. Trace Fishman, 13 Fern Lane. My husband and I ask that you change the language of the audience, ordinance, excuse me, My husband and I ask that you change the language of the audience, ordinance, excuse me, to grinding down and repaving sections of the road to grinding down and repaving sections of the road so that we can be provided for. so that we can be provided for. Within the past two weeks, potholes on Fern Lane have been filled, Within the past two weeks, potholes on Fern Lane have been filled, but the underlying potholes upon potholes but the underlying potholes upon potholes has changed riding on sections of Fern Lane has changed riding on sections of Fern Lane into an experience like Mr. Toad's Wild Ride. into an experience like Mr. Toad's Wild Ride. It's up and down and up and down and up and down. It's up and down and up and down and up and down. They seem like ruts in the road. They seem like ruts in the road. We can just see that the paving is going to, in the potholes, We can just see that the paving is going to, in the potholes, is going to start to come out. In fact, it has. is going to start to come out. In fact, it has. And this is going to continue to happen And this is going to continue to happen unless we can get parts of the road where it's the worst unless we can get parts of the road where it's the worst built in, ground down and repaved, just parts of the road. built in, ground down and repaved, just parts of the road. Fern Lane is by far the longest road on the list of private roads. Fern Lane is by far the longest road on the list of private roads. By taking out the language of simply repaving small sections of the road, By taking out the language of simply repaving small sections of the road, which would not work in our case, would not help us. which would not work in our case, would not help us. The ordinance would serve all the roads covered by the proposed ordinance. The ordinance would serve all the roads covered by the proposed ordinance. We are not asking for something that would break the ban, We are not asking for something that would break the ban, that others would come rushing in and want whole roads redone that others would come rushing in and want whole roads redone because we are by far the longest road. because we are by far the longest road. But because of the negligence over the past few years, But because of the negligence over the past few years, it has gotten to the point where unless parts of it are ground down it has gotten to the point where unless parts of it are ground down and then repaved, and then repaved, it will not work. It just won't work. it will not work. It just won't work. So I ask you, we are good citizens. So I ask you, we are good citizens. We have been good citizens of this town We have been good citizens of this town and we are asking for something to me that is not that frivolous. Thank you. and we are asking for something to me that is not that frivolous. Thank you.
Hello, Pam Hatfield, 37 Fern Lane.
Hello, Pam Hatfield, 37 Fern Lane.
I think many of you are aware I'm not in favor of the new ordinance,
I think many of you are aware I'm not in favor of the new ordinance,
specifically sections 273-16B and C,
specifically sections 273-16B and C,
which suggests the residents will incur costs on top of the taxes we already pay
which suggests the residents will incur costs on top of the taxes we already pay
before we pay for the road.
before we pay for the road.
A town council discretion clause or some kind may be better.
A town council discretion clause or some kind may be better.
Section C should be removed entirely, in my opinion.
Section C should be removed entirely, in my opinion.
This would give the residents the peace of mind to know
This would give the residents the peace of mind to know
this won't create a significant hardship for all residents
this won't create a significant hardship for all residents
by proposing an outrageous road improvement cost estimate
by proposing an outrageous road improvement cost estimate
like the $550,000 that was originally proposed by the town to remedy this situation.
like the $550,000 that was originally proposed by the town to remedy this situation.
It is still unclear to me, even with the ordinance,
It is still unclear to me, even with the ordinance,
what we can expect in the way of road maintenance.
what we can expect in the way of road maintenance.
Can, I don't know, can we explain what we can expect in the way of services?
Can, I don't know, can we explain what we can expect in the way of services?
And when we can expect them, how that process works?
And when we can expect them, how that process works?
Thank you to Public Works for patching areas of Fern Lane recently.
Thank you to Public Works for patching areas of Fern Lane recently.
However, there are still some sections, as you just heard,
However, there are still some sections, as you just heard,
that need more attention to provide a longer lasting solution
that need more attention to provide a longer lasting solution
that would benefit the residents and the town, potentially reducing future maintenance costs.
that would benefit the residents and the town, potentially reducing future maintenance costs.
Thank you for considering the solution
Thank you for considering the solution
and providing benefit, that would provide benefit to both the residents and the town.
and providing benefit, that would provide benefit to both the residents and the town.
I appreciate your efforts. I look forward to a satisfactory resolution.
I appreciate your efforts. I look forward to a satisfactory resolution.
And as I heard earlier, we are, you know, good citizens.
And as I heard earlier, we are, you know, good citizens. We love our community.
We love our community. We love East Hampton.
We love East Hampton.
And we would really just like to have a long-term solution for this long-going problem.
And we would really just like to have a long-term solution for this long-going problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a first. This is a first. My name is Giselle Bozai. I live on Two Poe Road. My name's Giselle Bozai. I live on Two Poe Road. And we have an issue, Poe Road and Byron Road that are connected. And we have an issue, Poe Road and Byron Road that are connected. And a few years ago, the five residents that live on this particular corner, these two roads, And a few years ago, the five residents that live on this particular corner, these two roads, sent a letter in and we all collectively sent a letter in and we all collectively decided to give the town up as far as the private road to the town. decided to give the town up as far as the private road to the town. I'm sure it's on file. I'm sure it's on file. The town paved every road in our neighborhood except R2. The town paved every road in our neighborhood except R2. And our concern is that it's deteriorating And our concern is that it's deteriorating even more readily now that it is not keeping up with the other two. even more readily now that it is not keeping up with the other two. It's connected with the sewer, so I know that there's maintenance that has to be looked at in there. It's connected with the sewer, so I know that there's maintenance that has to be looked at in there. But it's crumbling around the manhole covers. All the curves are down. But it's crumbling around the manhole covers. All the curves are down. And on my particular street, it's downhill And on my particular street, it's downhill and it's in the direction going to the lake. and it's in the direction going to the lake. And so it is very populated with foot traffic And so it is very populated with foot traffic and little kids on bikes and scooters. and little kids on bikes and scooters. And they are finding that it's, it's not healthy. It's not safe. And they are finding that it's, it's not healthy. It's not safe. And we've already had one little incident where one of the little girls broke her arm on her bike. And we've already had one little incident where one of the little girls broke her arm on her bike. So what I would like to know, futuristically anyway, So what I would like to know, futuristically anyway, is if there is a process that we need to update our information to get it listed is if there is a process that we need to update our information to get it listed on file again, that we would like to petition you to take over our roads, on file again, that we would like to petition you to take over our roads, we just need to have some dialogue through and a little bit of guidance. we just need to have some dialogue through and a little bit of guidance. And we want to know, if not, what we can do to get especially those two roads And we want to know, if not, what we can do to get especially those two roads with the deteriorating conditions mixed up. Thank you. with the deteriorating conditions mixed up. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deb Monjet and I live at 6 Byron Road in East Hampton. Hi, my name is Deb Monjet and I live at 6 Byron Road in East Hampton. And Byron and Poe, Giselle was just talking about the road she lives on, which is Poe Road. And Byron and Poe, Giselle was just talking about the road she lives on, which is Poe Road. And back in 2014, I have the paper where we all signed And back in 2014, I have the paper where we all signed by the recommendation of the town manager and the public works by the recommendation of the town manager and the public works to start the process of turning our roads over. to start the process of turning our roads over. And when that process began, it kind of stopped And when that process began, it kind of stopped because our association didn't agree, so we had to stop the process. because our association didn't agree, so we had to stop the process. But the town was willing to take the roads over as is But the town was willing to take the roads over as is because the roads aren't up to standard, but because it's a through road. because the roads aren't up to standards, but because it's a through road. And from my understanding, I think we're one of the only through roads of all the private roads. And from my understanding, I think we're one of the only through roads of all the private roads. Tennyson and Poe, Byron and Poe are through roads. Tennyson and Poe, Byron and Poe are through roads. I think most of the other roads are dead-end roads. I think most of the other roads are dead-end roads. Some roads have the sewer system, some roads don't. Some roads have the sewer system, some roads don't. We had our roads paved because we had our sewer system put in, I think, 1979. We had our roads paved because we had our sewer system put in, I think, 1979. I'm not sure. I'm not sure. But over the years, our roads have been somewhat maintained with patching But over the years, our roads have been somewhat maintained with patching and repairs. As far as the ordinance goes, and repairs. As far as the ordinance goes, I understand, you know, the town's position with making a blanket ordinance, I understand, you know, the town's position with making a blanket ordinance, but I don't believe that all the private roads are equal and there are problems. but I don't believe that all the private roads are equal and there are problems. Some roads, you know, they're not all created equal. Some roads, you know, they're not all created equal. I agree with Giselle that we would still like to start our process again with turning our road over. I agree with Giselle that we would still like to start our process again with turning our road over. We have a tremendous amount of traffic through Byron and Poe Road. We have a tremendous amount of traffic through Byron and Poe Road. And we do have to maintain the integrity of our sewer system. And we do have to maintain the integrity of our sewer system. And if the town votes to do an ordinance, And if the town votes to do an ordinance, you know, we're just worried, we just don't want our roads to deteriorate. you know, we're just worried, we just don't want our roads to deteriorate. We want to make sure that the maintenance is continued. We want to make sure that the maintenance is continued. That's it. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Close Public Works. Close Public Works. Second discussion, all those as never. Second discussion, all those as never. Close. Close.
April twenty-sixth meetings of the East Hampton Town Council order, would you please join me in the pledge?
April twenty-sixth meetings of the East Hampton Town Council order, would you please join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our first principle.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And motion for approval to minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on twelve fifths two thousand twenty-two.
Of a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, at this time I'd like to open up the meeting to public remarks. Please raise your hand and I will call on you. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Smith, if you'd like to be first, lead off.
Thank you. Good evening. Last week, after years of single-digit increases, the State Partnership Plan, in which our town and school employees participate for health insurance, announced an unprecedented ten-point-five percent increase in renewals for the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Approximately two-hundred-eighty employees out of three-hundred-fifty school employees participate in our insurance program and they contribute about eighteen to twenty percent of the cost, depending on which union they belong to. With that increase of ten-point-five percent, for which we budgeted five percent in our budget, the education budget will be short by approximately two-hundred-thousand dollars. When I announced this last evening at the Board of Education meeting, I pledged not to reduce our teaching staff. Rather, I pledged that I would review after open enrollment period that begins in two weeks and I would resort to, if necessary, reducing the math specialists paid for through the American Rescue Plan funds as necessary. Rather than fund these positions for two additional years, we would fund them for one year and shift funds to support this insurance increase. The reason I'm bringing this up is that information was shared with department heads this morning speaking to the possibility of an additional one-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand dollars in cuts to the Board of Education budget. Given that you now know that I'm pledging to fund the additional two-hundred-thousand without cutting teaching positions, I'm asking you to reconsider the cut of one-hundred-ninety-five-thousand, which unfortunately now would highly likely result in teacher reductions. I thank you for your consideration. I know that both the Board of Finance and the Town Council throughout the budget process have been voiced in opposing cutting teachers and I know that this audience appreciates that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Ted Turner, two-twenty-three, Hockhill Road. I'm on the Board of Finance and I believe that the Board of Finance sent you a theme. The capital budget was cut over a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. The education budget was cut. All the things were cut. I'll make this nice and short. The one thing I hope you do not eliminate is a lieutenant in the police department. This is public safety. We need police, we need the administration, we need a good police department, we have one and we need a lieutenant. How much would it cost each taxpayer to put a lieutenant through there? I heard a figure of six dollars for taxpayers. That lieutenant's not worth six bucks. I don't believe it. We need a good police department and I hope you reconsider or consider keeping lieutenant's job and funding it. So I have to.
Good evening. Dennis Lesner, two-hundred, Middletown Road, Colchester, Connecticut, the current chief of police for the town of East Hampton. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight concerning the proposed cuts to the police department budget. I know this year is no different than any other year. No one wants to raise taxes, no one wants the mill rate to go up. I often hear this is not a good year to increase staffing or increase overall budgets, but when will it ever be a good year? In the proposed budget that was forwarded to you by the Board of Finance is a request for lieutenant's position at a cost of only twenty-five-thousand dollars to the town. The position would be created by taking one of the existing sergeants' positions, we currently have four, and making one of them lieutenant's position. I'm not requesting to increase staffing levels. You may recall, we only have seventeen officers for the entire department. I'm just asking to reallocate one of the existing positions. I'm requesting the approval of lieutenant's position for the following reasons. As a result of the Police Accountability Bill, there are more mandatory tasks placed on departments than ever before. Body-worn and in-car cameras, body-worn cameras such as the one I'm wearing now. These systems are complex and require hours to download videos for court and public disclosure. On Tuesday of last week, I spent approximately four hours downloading body-worn camera and in-car cameras videos at the request of the state's attorney's office and Middletown Superior Court. The bill also requires departments to be accredited through the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. To achieve accreditation, it is a three-year process, process which departments must comply with four-hundred-plus standards, the four-hundred standards I have here on double-sided paper. Each standard requires proof of compliance and often each standard has several subfolders within the file. Proof of compliance can be in the form of general orders, policies and procedures, case reports, photographs and observations by onsite assessment. Each standard requires proof of compliance every year. Departments around the state estimate it takes twenty-plus hours a week dedicated to Kalia to make the program successful. Many departments dedicate a full-time officer just to Kalia. Kalia is new to our agency and we're starting from the beginning. This will be a huge undertaking to be able to accomplish this on time. Additional training requirements such as mandatory drug testing and mandatory psychiatric evaluations every three years also must be tracked. The lieutenant would also be responsible for the investigation of any complaints made against the officers of the department. The lieutenant would conduct the investigation and forward the results to me for review and possible discipline. Lieutenant would also provide another layer of review in the investigation of these complaints. The lieutenant would provide a clear second-in-command for the agency. This person would act as the acting chief of police in my absence. It would also allow for a succession plan for when I decide to retire, hire within if the candidate is qualified. A person holding the rank of sergeant does not have a chance of being promoted to the rank of chief, either inside or outside of the agency. Managing the training files is another thing that is currently handled by one sergeant. This sergeant is assigned to patrol and must clear reports, respond to calls for service, supervise the squad and manage the fleet while ensuring all officers meet the necessary training requirements. Accreditation is not a one-and-done. It is here to stay and it's going to require a commitment by the department. Taking someone off the road and temporarily assigning them to accreditation is a short-term fix for a long-term problem. Lieutenant's position will be a permanent fix. The Police Accountability Bill requires several new mandates which are not properly funded by the legislature. Councilman Fiegel, Councilman Brown and David Cox all spoke out in favor of lieutenant's position at a recent Board of Finance meeting. I'm asking for all of you to support this lieutenant position as well. This, the items listed above clearly show I can keep this person very busy for the entire day. Kalia alone, I believe, is enough justification for this position. If the council does decide to cut this position, which I'm hoping you don't, it would only move the mill rate about point-zero-three mills. This equates to roughly six dollars annually savings to an East Hampton taxpayer.
Time.
Can I summarize?
I've given you over a minute, Chief.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Kirk Kamisky, sixty-two, Wapo Rock. And I just want to follow briefly with lieutenant's position. It has to do with human resources and an organization and you always have to have a number one, but you have to have a number two behind a lieutenant in that power structure. From the standpoint, they get to take care of all the routine mundane issues of the day, dealing with employees and the discipline. And you have to have somebody to go up to, so they get to make the decisions, they get to do the investigations, whether it be internally or externally, and they get to make the decisions and then the chief gets to, somebody gets to appeal to the chief. You have somebody to have to appeal to. And I think you do need a lieutenant for that power structure to have that be effective as far as a system of human resources.
Right. Salvatore New Sephora, one-four-seven Colchester Avenue. I'm also a member of the Board of Education and in light of the recent events that just came to, like yesterday, the ten and a half percent insurance increase results in about two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase to the budget that we passed. That was unexpected completely and throws us, throws the thing out of sync with what we had recommended earlier. I want to remind the board that are due to the pandemic, our math scores are down a bit and also our literacy rates are down and we have through pandemic funding provided instructors, teachers that could help bring those scores back up to pre-pandemic levels and we're on track to do so. Cutting the budget puts that in jeopardy. We're looking as a Board of Education to try and bring our students up to pre-pandemic levels, if not greater, and we are on track currently to do so. I want to remind the board that we have technology issues. We have some computers and electronic boards that are up to eleven years old. These updates are a necessary need, not a want. We need to bring technology back up to data in certain areas and budget cuts would prevent us from doing so and would jeopardize education in my opinion. So in fact, I, due to the change that we just found out yesterday with the, due to the insurance problem, I'm actually asking that we increase the budget to the Board of Education by fifty thousand rather than ask for a decrease provided by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Nancy Naves, sixteen, Daly Road. I'd like to ask the council to accept the Board of Education. I'd like to ask the council to accept the Board of Education budget as presented and not make any further cuts. I believe we cannot afford to lose any teaching positions, especially in light of all that's been going on, so I hope you will take that into consideration and accept it as presented. Thank you.
Who else would like to speak?
Paul Muszynski, Fernwood Drive. I would also like to stand in support of the budget as presented by the Board of Finance, obviously the chief has explained lieutenant's position quite well. In particular, the education budget, the, every other elected official in town on the other boards were pretty specific that they did not want to see teacher cuts made. So they made their cuts. You know, and Richard, remember that. Obviously, cutting a teacher position will put the class sizes up to very close to thirty, which is, if you look at studies done by many education groups, is a pretty critical cutoff number that you do not want to reach. So I'd like to see at least keep it or restore what the Board of Finance got. Thank you.
Time is sound seventeen Karine. I'm a registered Republican and I am in favor for both the town and education budget as presented by the Board of Finance. I did want to be transparent and let you know that I am a parent who was years ago dissatisfied with the decisions that were being made by the Board of Finance and Town Council in cheap cutting teaching resources. I did apply and one of my sons did get into a mountain school in which it's a product of the taxpayer of East Hampton paying for his education now. I want to be able to prevent future generations from going through this process. And I do want to support the East Hampton teaching resources that we have currently in our community. They are a wonderful resource and I did want to make mention that I understand that there is approximately two hundred thousand dollar cut being discussed by the board potentially for cutting with the Board of Education. And I just want to caution that making such an extreme decision like this could present an uproar in those who do support the education community and voting down that should, you know, proceed referendum that residents can vote no in protest of a budget being so low. So again, I do want to support the budgets moving forward, both the town and education budget as presented by the Board of Finance. Thank you.
Emily Cronin, twenty-four Abbey Road. As others have said, I too am here tonight to ask that you, in light of the changes to the, to next year's insurance costs, that you make no further cuts and that you would actually restore with the Board of Finance, since it was taken out prior to us knowing that. We really cannot stand to lose more teaching positions in this town, we, we've never recovered from the last cuts and the budget that was presented by Mr. Smith was already bare bones. And I feel respectful to the current economic times, so that would be my request. And I would be one of those voters who would not be in support of so low an education budget, I would have to vote no, as I'm sure others would. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Corvo, I live on forty-two Sunrise Lane. I'm a mother of a seven-year-old elementary school student at Memorial School. I am the daughter of a firefighter and a niece of a police officer. And I'm just here to advocate against any additional cuts in the budget. I think in order to have a viable community, you need residents who feel safe, you need businesses that thrive and you need children who are being properly educated. I think the budgets that are proposed should be maintained because I think as the town council, you're students of the community. And that involves addressing short-term problems, but also long-term goals and growth. And I think reducing the budgets by any of these amounts, I think, would sacrifice that long-term growth. And so I think, as others have said, I'm not taking people's budgets lightly or any increase in taxes at all. I know we all have budgets and monthly statements and everything else, but I think consistent with what we could lose if these cuts come through, I don't think it's worth it. And so I would just advocate that these cuts are not adopted and that the budgets that were presented are adopted as proposed. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very none with the closest portion of the meeting, moving on to five presentations we have on tonight.
Correct.
No bids or contracts.
Also correct.
So let's leave this item seven, resolution considering ordinance amending chapter two seventy-three of the code of the town of East Hampton regarding streets and sidewalks concerning limited maintenance and private roads. Well, this has been on our table for multiple months. We hashed it out, sent it back, massaged it. I do believe that this might not fit everyone's bill, but I believe is better coverage and more of a guarantee that these private roads will get maintained than there was ever presented before. That's why my opinion, I think we should adopt it as written. Have a motion on that.
I would make a motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter two seventy-three of the code East, town of East Hampton regarding streets and sidewalks concerning limited maintenance of private roads.
Second, I have a motion and a second, I mean discussion. Mr. Wright.
Yes, I'd like to make a statement. Again, tonight, we've had a number of people from Fern Lane join us. We've been together for over four months. And again, tonight, I heard some new information that I wasn't aware of. Back to nineteen sixty-two and et cetera, et cetera, and then we had a young lady step forward who lives in the Byron Pole neighborhood. It amazes me that things just keep coming up and up and up. And it does make that a challenge for yours truly. I would like to begin though by thanking the residents of Fern Lane for their interest in improving Fern Lane. Their efforts have not gone unnoticed. Because of their efforts, we, the town council, are now reflecting on and could very well vote on an ordinance that will assure Fern Lane residents and residents on nineteen other private roads to have their roads plowed and maintained as outlined in the ordinance. From my view, it's strictly my view, it is unfortunate that there are thirty-one other additional private roads that are not on that list. If this ordinance passes, there will be though, an opportunity for those streets to approach the council, go through the process and hopefully and possibly be considered to be added to the list. I know what we are most likely going to be voting on shortly does not meet with the Fern Lane residents wanted. But it is a step forward. Not a humongous step forward, but it is a step forward. Because those on Fern Lane and the other nineteen streets now have an ordinance that acknowledges that their road will be plowed and their road will be maintained based on what is stated in the ordinance. As Yogi Bear has said, it ain't over till it's over. It might not necessarily be over even with the approval of this ordinance. The ordinance can change. I think the residents of Fern Lane, as well as the residents on all of the other streets that are private roads in East Hampton, need to do some soul searching. Keep in mind, I have sat on this council for nine years. During my tenure on the council, we have had to review a number of requests for private roads to become public. In each case, either the contractor who was building the subdivision or the residents had to follow a process which included bringing the private road up to standards set by the town. During my tenure, I have not voted to accept a private road without meeting those standards. It's a challenge for me, but it's a challenge I accepted when I ran. I did what I thought was right and I need to continue doing what I think is right this season. Tonight, I will accept the ordinance as proposed. I will also though, follow with great interest any improvements that the town can complete to improve the condition of Fern Lane and all the other private roads. Those who were here two weeks ago heard the question that I asked. I asked, what are we going to be doing regarding the private roads? What are we going to be doing to improve the quality of the private roads? I would like to thank Mr. Walsh and I would like to thank Mr. Cox for doing some soul searching and they did prepare a document talking about their assessment of those roads. That's the beginning of what needs to continue down the road, ho, 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 in order to bring improvements, not only to Fern Lane, but to all the other private roads. Those roads need to be safe for you and for all the other residents that live in that area. And they need to be safe for our police, our fire and our ambulance service. You can be rest assured what you have brought up will not be forgotten, at least by yours truly. And I will continue to make known the fact that they pay the taxes. Maybe the road won't become a public road, but it should be appropriately maintained for the safety of the residents and our safety personnel.
Thank you. Any other comments? Very none, all those in favor? Are you opposed? No she cares. Hey, subcommittee reports.
I guess that's me, right?
That would be you.
Alrighty. The athletic field committee did not meet since we last met as a council, but things are happening. The track is going to begin seeing a resurfacing of the track, hopefully early, very early next week. It's going to take at least two weeks, could take even longer. It's my understanding, the, the tennis court will be delayed and completed after school gets out so that the young people that are participating on our tennis teams will be able to utilize the facility as it is. It is my understanding that I think it's tomorrow, we will have our first baseball game on our new fully renovated athletic field. That is a major improvement. It's an improvement because yours truly dealt with that field in my other positions. Assistant to the superintendent for thirty-one years. You don't know how happy. It warms the cockles of my heart that that field will not be underwater and will be playable. It's taken a long time, like a fly in wine, it takes time. Well, the grapes have been harvested and now we have a field and we need to savor that wonderful field. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other committee reports, subcommittee reports? Mr. Brown, water report.
May I just make a comment on behalf of, of Mr. Brown for the water subcommittee?
Yes, you may.
Of the water subcommittee, we're going to be trying to get a meeting together, preliminary engineering report for the state as well, talk about progress on testing of potential well sites in anticipation of really moving into what we hope will be some design and decisions and design related to a new water source for the center, it's starting. So that's coming up next week.
Very good, thank you. Hey, very none. Item B, consideration of possible actions on the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three general government and Board of Education budgets and capitals. Now with that, I'd like to make a little statement. In November, Republicans were elected by an overwhelming majority because the people were sick and tired of the power grab, uncontrolled spending and the expansion of government by the Democrats. This Republican budget has none of that. We were not elected to expand departments, we were elected to spend prudently. So I asked that my fellow council members join me in supporting this budget. We have increased the Board of Education budget by three point five percent. The Board of Education capital budget by a hundred and thirty-seven percent. By buying new computers, smart boards for the middle school, as well as providing a plan for replacement of those boards in the remaining schools. In addition, we have doubled the road repair budget. With the increased gas, home run fuel, food prices straining everybody's budget, I feel incumbent upon us to do what we can to reduce the financial burden already placed on our residents. And with that, we have a motion.
I'd like to start by saying I'm glad to see that two hundred thousand dollars would not have and won't cause a teacher's position. So that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three Board of Education budget in the amount of thirty-four million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Have a second on that. A motion and a second, discussion. Go ahead, Pete. Sit here in awe of your openness statement. Thank you, I appreciate that. That fits to the care of the person sitting in that chair. Two years ago, we had a zero increase. Forgot, last year, Dave, we had a what?
A mill rate increase? The mill rate increase?
Yes.
One point four and change?
One point four. So to characterize the Democrat that's spending, why? Let's move, Chris. You know, and I know, you sat on this board with us. Mr. Brown, wait a minute. No, Mr. Brown. My floor. Gather me all you want, you can't throw me off this board. This is my time. You have your time. You're not discussing the budget. I am discussing the budget. You don't have a problem with the budget. You cannot characterize how I'm going to discuss the budget. Don't do that, Mark. That's being a bully. Plain and simple. I have a chance to speak. Last time I did this, you threw me out for chairman. Right. Guess what? You can't throw me off the council. So I'm going to have my second. Thank you. Now, as far as this, let's talk about the police part. Twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay? Keep going. Twenty-five thousand dollars. Hey, see? We are on that budget. I'm not done. We're not on that budget. We're on the education budget. Why are you waiting for the appropriate budget? So we can even address it. And I'll talk about it then, again. Okay. I'll talk about it all night. Go ahead. Twenty-five thousand dollars. I don't, where are they coming from? We have people on this council, one on it. They plan on running for higher office. Made statements. We support the police. We demand better policing. You don't get it out of thin air. The state mandates cheap and want, going on this council one. But if they're there, we have to meet them. Sooner or later, it's going to cost us dollars, big dollars, if we don't meet them. This, these cuts. What did you think the Board of Finance was doing? You think they just threw these numbers out? They didn't give them thought or anything? Where you had a little caucus in the ninth hour and you changed it? The Board of Finance heard the will of the people. You want to talk about a majority win? Yeah, the Republicans got it. Congratulations. You didn't get it. The walk on the backs of the townspeople.
Mr. Wright? I would like to add, thank you very much. I take issue with the Board of Ed cut $195,640.
Mr. Wright, we didn't cut it. We didn't cut it.
We left it exactly as presented.
Can we be on Board of Finance?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear.
Can we track that cut?
Oh, I'll just comment in. So then you didn't cut the fire marshal 39?
We're not on that. We're on the Board of Ed budget right now.
Oh, we're just on the Board of Ed budget. Can you then review with me briefly what you made a motion out of again?
Yes, I repeat, the motion was for $34,273,597 as presented from the Board of Finance.
Can I say that any other amounts mentioned were never a cut? They were still a very large increase. There has at no point has a cut in the Board of Ed budget been brought by this anyone here or the Finance Department. Zero cuts. The Board of Ed budget has never been cut. It has only been increased.
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I appreciate what Councilman Peterson stated, but I think we have to become a little more realistic.
I don't think so. If you ask for $100,000...
I'm speaking. I'm speaking. Inflation, et cetera. They can't stay where they are, okay? And I understand with capital, et cetera, et cetera. I understand all of that. That's no different than it's been for the last eons of years. I do have a question, though, of my Republican friends. Since an awful lot has changed since this morning when a document came out, I'd be curious as to what brought about the change? How did we sort of get over the idea that we weren't going to cut $195,640? I'd like to know that, because you see, the conversations you had regarding that were not in public. They were behind a closed door. They were not in public, okay? And I get, I want the Board of Finance, and I want the Board of Education. Everything that they did was in public, okay? And whether they liked what they saw or didn't, they were honest upfront, and they said it in public.
But you keep saying cut, you're not being honest. It was a discussion between an increase of $999,000 or $1.188 million. There was no cut, ever.
I am looking at this document that I received this morning.
And Mr. Wright, no, no. Because what you're stating, you know the answer to it. Last year, we didn't see a budget. We had no discussion about it until it was presented before us. So do not, all of a sudden, after nine years of sitting on council, be surprised because now you're in the minority. When you were in the majority, the exact same thing happened, and guess what? That's what happens. We do a budget, we present it, you did a budget, you presented it. We had no say two years ago when you added five staff to the Board of Ed. You added two police officers that were not in the budget, and one of them was cut by the chief, and staff was cut by the Board of Ed. You had no problem in adding them at a time when a budget couldn't be voted on. So let's not talk about being upfront and honest.
I'm going to be very honest with you. We did share all that information with you. We shared it with you well in advance of the vote. You knew where we were coming from. It was not a surprise. But what I'm referring to, and maybe this is a document that I should not have received, but the document that I received is $195,640 less than what was approved by the Board of Finance. That's what I'm looking at, okay?
But that wasn't what the motion was, was it? The discussion happened with the Board, with Mr. Smith, that because of the additional $200,000, which was basically the cut we were looking for, because he got hit blindsided by the insurance company, whereas this was proposed before we had that information. That was the reason we decided to take it back.
Excuse me. That information came to you. Maybe you don't read your emails, but it came to me at 3:34 on Friday afternoon. I knew about the $200,000. I don't care about maybe you not reading your email. I read the email. I knew all about it, and I listened to the Board of Ed's meeting last night. I heard the superintendent explain eloquently what's happening, and he was going to try and work with the Board of Education to come up with a way to live with the cut. And I give him credit for that.
The email I got was the exact same thing, and according to the town manager's email, it says, "It's not to worry. It should be discussed as far as the budget." If you would like me to read the email, it's exactly what Mr. Cox sent to us. That's the email I read.
And I also know that the Board of Ed heard about it last night, when in fact it's the Board of Ed budget, not the superintendent's budget, not the administration's budget. It's the Board of Ed's budget. That I have a problem with too, and I don't mind sharing that with all of you. Please keep in mind, I am only going by what I've received. I didn't receive the new version. I just received the version that came out this morning. And based on that, that's the question that I'm asking. I appreciate the fact that now you shared with me why we're not going to cut to $195,640, and we're going to help them with their insurance. I appreciate that. It would have been nice to have known that before the meeting, but that's not a problem. I think I've said enough.
Mr. Beagles?
I'm hoping you follow that.
I was going to say, I'm going to watch this, and I think that after reviewing this, I might be a little bit confused, but the first thing that Mr. Cox set out there, was that set in stone? Or is that something that had to be voted on and going through some different stuff to make sure that was actually going to go through?
Way I was reading, it was quite set in stone.
That's the way I read it. That's why I was asking that question. So we found out just recently that's what was going to happen, correct?
Yes, not until, actually, if he's still here, but I think it was today, like this afternoon, the official percentage was actually put out.
That's what I thought too, and I didn't know if I was wrong on thinking that way. So obviously, we wouldn't have made a decision until today, because this is when we found out it was actually, I'm just saying this for lack of better word, written in stone, that this was going to happen that way.
You're saying something, apparently.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Cox, Mr. Cox send that information out to all of us?
Was that the official percentage that was sent out when that email was sent to us? Or was that decided today, the official percentage?
The letter that we received was, in my understanding, was what the state was telling us what our rates were going to be. Our rate was going to be.
We said we were going to wait, and they did the official meeting today at the Board of Education to see if it was definite and the exact percentage increase.
I didn't go to the Board of Education meeting, so I don't know what they did. But what I believe I said in my email was that we anticipated that that was a $50,000 to $100,000 impact on the town's budget, but that staff was not prepared to ask for any changes in the town's budget for that.
Right, so we didn't have a definite number at the time.
The reason we gave a range was because it really depends on what happens with selections that people make for insurance and employee changes and things of that nature. We only speculated what the change would be for the Board of Education. We didn't have a number for the Board of Education.
That's what the email says.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, that was the 3:34 PM email that you sent out on Friday, Mr. Cox?
Yes, that is what I'm referencing, yes. And I think the chairman is going to read what I said.
Insurance renewal, all. Please see the attached letter from the state regarding the renewal rates for the town BOE and general government, health insurance. The rate increase is approximately 10%, which is twice what was used for predicting the FY 2023 expenses. On general government side, the impact is $50,000 to $100,000, and probably as much as four times for the amount of the BOE. At this point, the staff is not suggesting any effort to revisit or change the town's recommended budget. As the year progresses and the true impact becomes known based on actual activity, staff may present with some options for modification. This is simply information at this point, and the council move forward considering a budget for refering.
So would you prefer that we didn't continue these discussions to see what the actual damage would have done? Or would you prefer the $200,000 also cut on top of this? Because that's what I'm getting. We followed up on what this would do.
I stated what I stated based on what I read and what was shared with me. I also listened to the Board of Education's meeting last night, and there was nothing that was said at that meeting that didn't hear exactly what was in that email. And yet, this morning, when I saw this document, it was pretty evident that there was $196,640 being cut, and there was no discussion at all about insurance. We all knew about it on Friday. It was reinforced, obviously, after your caucus, but it was reinforced last evening in this room.
So are you saying you would like the $197,000 cut to go forward? Is that what you're upset about?
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion on, okay? You said that you were going to keep the budget as it was proposed by the Board of Finance. I have no problem with that. I respect the Board of Finance and all the work that they did. I respect all the work that the town Board of Education did.
Sounds good.
My concern was what I read this morning.
Thank you. I got no more comments. Allison?
Eric? I just can't take the cut language. It was never a cut. It was a difference of increasing the budget by $992,561 or increasing it by $1,188,202. Never was a cut involved. It was a matter of how much we were going to increase it.
We have a motion in a second. All those members signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Extentions? Most prepared.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 town general government budget in the amount of $17,486,368, including $12,454,682 for general operations, which includes a reduction of $3,950 in the fire and marshal's office, $25,000 in police regular patrol through elimination of the proposed lieutenant position, $4,176,461 for debt service, and $855,225 for transfers and capital.
I was thinking that. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Brown?
Can't vote for that. You're shortchanging the town. You're shortchanging the chief. You're not doing right. Over $25,000. You need a second in command in the police department. We've known it for years. Don't understand what's coming down the pipe. You have a good chief. You want to keep good chiefs coming. They're not going to come if they can't do a good job. They can't do a good job unless you support them. $25,000? You could find that in a heartbeat. That man would feel supported. The town would love to have a police department that is certified, that is accredited. No foresight here. As I said before, where's my law and order people? Where are they? You don't support them? Or you're just going to sit here? I can't support this. Whether to go down. I have nothing more to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Our fire marshal can't get the work done that he has now, even with his assistant. And here we're cutting for the budget. I don't understand. I know that he did make an earlier request, and the town manager cut that. If I could, I'd like to ask the town manager a snippet, a little question on that. Mr. Cox, the fire marshal's budget was reduced by you. And I'm just curious as to what the reduction was. I know it was approximately $41,000, I think. But was that for additional personnel?
The funds that were cut from the fire marshal's office were directly related to moving the fire marshal position to full time.
Okay, so it was a personnel issue?
Right.
All right. As I said, that department can't get their job done now. And with more building and more, hopefully, more businesses, and hopefully more eateries, we're going to need money in that budget. The second item, I don't disagree with, Mr. Brown. $25,000 in the budget our size is piddly ass. $25,000 to afford us the opportunity to have someone who can fulfill the role of chief if, in fact, the chief gets ill, has to go out on a personal leave day, has vacation. Who's the chief when he's gone? It's Mr. Cox. Mr. Cox is a nice guy, but Mr. Cox is not a fully trained police officer and chief. For $25,000, we could have someone fulfill that role. I think it's foolish not to. And I didn't hear capital, so I believe that's a separate item that's going to be coming. I believe this is... Okay.
Yes.
I've said all that I want.
Well, I like everything except I have to admit, I am definitely for having a lieutenant. I think it was something that you need, and that's the one that bothers me, I have to tell you honestly. I stuck up for this in another meeting, and I think the chief is a good man, and he definitely needs somebody, if God forbid, if he does use a firearm, he's out for months on end, or if he does get hurt or something like that, we need somebody in that position.
Okay, which leads me to, Mr. Brown, you stated we're not the law and order people. Okay, and you say it's only $25,000. $25,000, I agree with you, it's not much. But it's $125,000 we're going to have next year to replace the officer that's getting moved up, which is a problem I have with. Town of Portland, 8,934 people, a police budget of $1,539,350. It works out to $164 per person. Colchester, 15,555 people, $1,779,699, $114 per person. I'm doing this per person because that's what the Board of Ed likes to do when they say they need more money to not spend enough. Town of Hebrews, 9,098 people, $345,981, $38 per person in town of Hebrews. Last I knew, they don't have a heavy trank. Marlborough or East Tatum, East Tatum is roughly $58 per person for the town of East Tatum. East Tatum is roughly fifty-eight dollars per person for the town of East Tatum. Again, no mass murderers down there. The town of East Hampton, twelve thousand, seven hundred and seventeen people, two-point-two-eight million dollars, two-eight-three, six hundred thousand dollars. Eighteen officers, eighteen, a hundred and eighty dollars per person. We're the highest on the list. How are we not spending enough money? And by the way, none of those other towns have lieutenants. Apparently, they're all in trouble. No. I'm speaking, Mr. Brown. You had your chance. With those numbers, I see no reason in why we need to expand. It's not in the paper. It doesn't show. Mr. Goff?
Yeah, my problem is with the police accountability bill. That's just as simple as that. Throwing bodies on the fire just because there's already an own issue is not the way to solve the problem. And that, I really like our police chief. There's, there's no question about that. But when you just look at it, it's plain budget, money, take a motion out of everything. We have more police officers than anyone else around us, even though we're not the lowest population, except for Glass and Berry. I'm pretty sure most people I talked to said they moved out of Glass and Berry to come here because it's not as expensive, not for us to become that. So situation stinks, but physically it just makes sense.
Allison?
I agree with you, Mr. Goff, completely, as well as Mr. Phil Hall. And I feel as though if East Hampton were a crime-ridden town, I could legitimize it, but I can't legitimize it with the statistics as they are presently presented.
Uh, Ms. Peterson?
I don't have a whole lot to say. I'm, uh, in agreement with Mr. Goff, and likewise, my aberration from the chief makes it a very tough decision.
Okay, so with that? Yes?
Of those towns you've listed, how many are supported by the state police?
When you say supported, most of them do have one resident trooper.
So the resident trooper is responsible for all of the administrative duties?
And this patrol?
And the patrol. And the town pays the state with stipend.
That was in that.
Oh. So that's part of the process, too.
Yeah, I didn't leave any of them to share.
Port, shares a lot of services with middle town.
You, you will have no argument with me about plans for sharing services. You have no.
I'm asking, you made the statement, but you kind of left out parts that didn't kind of favor your position.
What part would that be?
Well, that the, all these towns have resident troopers, and the resident troopers are the administrators of the police department. And the resident troopers are paid through, not fully paid, I don't know, maybe seventy-five, eighty percent of stipend from this town.
That was pretty high. I was playing it for the troopers. It was around, I, I think with one of them, it was around two, three thousand.
And I, I don't want to get into it because I'm just saying, if, when you present, present.
I believe I said, I'm the.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I appreciate your research. Uh, I have a sneaking suspicion there are probably a few things that we're not aware of that make up the cost for each of those communities. Uh, but I'm going to tell you this. I've had the pleasure of living this town for many years. I've had the pleasure of being a part of this community for almost fifty years. I am proud of the police department. I am delighted that they're there. And I know when I needed them, they were there. They didn't have to wait for someone in a police cruiser coming from East Tatum Center all the way to the Billington Green, which is nine miles away. They came in time. They took care of my wife. They took care of my father. That's what we pay for. We pay for that service. And I'm going to tell you right now, I would pay dearly to increase it because I want the protection and the safety. And frankly, I don't know too many other people that wouldn't agree with me.
So what you're saying is our crime rate in East Hampton is high, but none of the numbers show that.
I'm saying we pay for quality.
And I believe we.
And I want quality.
I believe we get it.
I want quality for the Board of Ed. I want quality for all the other departments, and I want quality for the police department. It is, I'm in awe of our chief and what he's been able to accomplish in the short period of time that he's here. He has reviewed the policies and procedures, many because of changes that occur that we have no control over in part from. To his credit, he's been able to do it. I don't know how he does it, but he does. And we want to be certified. We want to be accredited. Because you know something? Our police department is no different than our public schools. We want them accredited, too. We want our police department accredited. And I want to pay whatever it is to make sure I am safe, my son is safe, my neighbors are safe. And heaven forbid, if something happens to me, nothing would delight me more than for a cruiser to stop off and say, Mr. Wright, the ambulance is on its way.
Yes, Mr. Goff. Just on top of that accreditation thing, I'm pretty sure it's the police chief that said that us getting accredited have no effect on the performance of our police department. It's just a bit unnecessary, state wickets. I guess another person might be a little easier, but it doesn't give us any extra points in this town. It doesn't make us any better just to say we're accredited. It's following the unnecessary rules coming down, and we have until twenty twenty-four to meet this. So if something doesn't change, we get off the pot and make that change. But for right now, it's not needed.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm just going to have to agree to disagree with, uh, my counsel, Mr. Goff. I dare say, if you ask the chief, he's learned a great deal from going through updating those policies and procedures, and so has his staff. It's part of in-service. It's part of in-service training, and that's all part of why that program is extremely important. And yeah, it's burdensome. Yeah, the legislator maybe didn't think about all of the work that was going to be entailed. But you know something? In the end, we're going to be in a lot better place.
A motion in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Four, three, motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to use five hundred thousand dollars of unassigned fund balance to offset certain needs for debt service in fiscal year two thousand twenty-three.
A motion in a second. Discussion. Mr. Brown?
I have a question. Uh, the five hundred thousand, when it's removed, uh, what will that leave our fund balance at?
Go ahead, Mr. Brent Goffman.
Is that something Mr. Cox would answer, or?
I can, I can answer that for you. Quite a, that is the money. Last year, you set aside seven hundred and some.
Six hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
And we only used a portion. It was five hundred thousand we made. So what I'm proposing to do, because our debt spike this year is five hundred and thirty thousand dollars above last year's debt spike, that we use that money to cut the spike, cut the beat, which will drop us down to the same debt service as last year. That's what the proposal of that money is.
And, and could you share with me what that percentage is? I'm just curious, that's all.
That percentage of.
What, what is the percentage that our fund balance will come down? That's all. That's the question I have.
Still have the same.
Thank you, Mr. Goff.
You're welcome.
So we, we ended fiscal year, uh, twenty twenty-one with fund balance, unassigned fund balance, a little over five point seven million. So if we peel back five hundred thousand, uh, of that, that would leave us with fund balance of ten point two percent as a percentage of expenditures, eleven point two, um, at the five point seven million dollar mark.
Is it possible for me to ask Mr. Jolka another question?
Okay, uh, Mr. Jolka?
Yes.
You might not have an exact figure, but I have a sneaking suspicion. Knowing of your ability, you probably know that there are a few dollars that might not be expended this year. Do we have an idea of what that is?
Well, I, I, I think we're going to probably end up, or we are going to end up with a surplus this year. I'm fairly confident. Not so much on the unexpended side. It's on the, the revenue side.
Okay.
Primarily driven by town clerk fees, conveyance taxes in the, in the town clerk's office, and, and building fees, because building, uh, building activity remains strong. So between both of those departments, we're probably looking north of two hundred thousand dollars of, uh, better-than-estimate. And also our tax department, given the, the tax sale, uh, we've done fairly well in, uh, in collections in that area. So we feel that we'll be about two hundred thousand dollars north of that. So, so I guess, given the, the five hundred thousand dollar use of fund balance, most likely all of that would be replenished anyways, and had very minimal impact on our, on our, uh, overall fund balance.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's my only question.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to call the annual town budget meeting for six P M. on Tuesday, May tenth in the town hall to be adjourned to referendum vote in accordance with Charter, Section four point one, with the recommended referendum date of Tuesday, May seventeenth.
Motion in a second. There's a discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, maybe I missed it because my hearing is poor. Uh, but when I reviewed the documents that were sent out this morning, they talked about a motion to approve the capital improvement plan. Uh, have, have we done that? And I sort of missed it.
I'm reading it in the order that was presented to the town manager. We did not get to the capital. Yes, that's item four.
That's item. Well, really, wouldn't that be item five and item five, item four?
If I may, just for a point of clarification there. Your capital improvements policy does not include or does not contemplate, uh, the capital improvement plan being part of the budget. Uh, it's, um, only the transfer that's made, that eight hundred and twelve thousand dollar transfer is part of the budget. Your, the policy of the council is actually to try and to complete the capital improvements plan before we get to the budget. Uh, but oftentimes, as is this case here, this year, it ends up getting wrapped in together for expediency office costs.
Thank you.
Nonetheless, it, it doesn't have an impact on the expenditure part of the budget. That's why it's not in that point.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome. A motion in a second. All those in favor?
Uh, let's, uh, motion to approve the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three capital improvements plan in the amount of one million, seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, which includes a reduction of fifty-five thousand dollars in elimination of the Sears Park pickleball court project.
A motion in a second. Discussion.
Uh, yeah, I, I do have, um, putting the pickleball court, wow. Maybe it's just me, but, uh, I, I, I'm noticing that, uh, we do have a lot of young people, but, uh, you know, we have a lot of other people that are like I, slowly maturing. And, uh, tennis isn't as easy to play, but pickleball, a whole lot easier to play. And, uh, in, in thi- this community, uh, probably about and I'm going to be very generous here, seventy-five percent of the people that live in this town are not children. They don't have children in schools, and they're paying taxes. And, you know, I'd like to give those folks who want to play pickleball an opportunity to play pickleball. Because, good Lord, we know they're paying their taxes. We know that because we receive more than we even expected this year. And, you know, what better way to give back to the folks who are supporting education but do not have children in the schools? Allowing them additional opportunities to exercise. I cannot understand for the likes of why we would be cutting the pickleball court. Now, again, it's just me. I'm unique, but I, I, I just can't figure out why you would do that when, in fact, the vast majority of the people that are paying taxes are paying to support our children in their education. This is for them. I can't understand.
Can we talk about where that money was going to be supported from and why it was proposed?
I, I put it right back in the budget, but you already voted for the budget, you see. Uh, and, and, and you can, you can maneuver all you want in capital. I'd like to see the pickleball court remain. I'd like to have it available for the residents of this community. And oh, by the way.
Your nine years when you were on council, in the past nine years, why didn't that happen? We are improving what we have by fixing up basketball courts and maintaining the airline trail. Sorry, we're splitting the difference. That is, what is that, fifty, sixty-two thousand dollars? That is going to also maintain what we have before we build more.
Mr. Goff?
Yes.
There's a load of money and capital. This is a project that would be helpful and appropriate for the vast majority of our citizens who would like to participate in that. Why wouldn't you want to support that?
Because I want to be fiscally responsible and support what I have and make that good shape before I add more.
Uh, excuse me, you're on the, uh, subcommittee for the fields. Aren't we not putting the pickleball court up high school? Isn't that part of the.
They, there are pickleball courts up there, yes.
Oh, okay, alright. Oh, but I just want to make sure we do have some in towns. We need, it's not like we have no pickleports or pickleball courts in the town of East Hampton, correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I know where you're going. I might even know a little more where you're going, but the long and the short of it is I've shared with you my opinion, and I think it's an investment in the quality of life in East Hampton.
Other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Name.
Two names. Motion carries. And was that, we have no more motions. I have none. Consideration of scheduled features.
Let me get my papers here.
Excuse me, I'll start a list of, uh, recommended increases. I do not want to take action on this tonight, or like to give everyone a chance to digest it, and then we have a discussion on it the next meeting. Some of these ones are something to seriously consider.
I do have a question, uh, for Mr. Cox. Uh, I appreciate the work that's been done. Uh, can you share with us, uh, who assisted you in coming up with these, uh, these various changes?
Uh, well, the changes come, uh, well, actually, let's back up and say the creation of the entire list, because as you recall, this is a new list for the town. Um, directly a result of the policy that the council implemented earlier this year. Uh, I, I will say that it is the management staff and I that have created this list. So it's, uh, brainstorming and, and trying to remember everything we've done. It's the administrative staff, those folks at the front line that are saying, hey, these are the ones we have. Uh, in terms of any proposed changes, uh, again, those are coming from, uh, the various departments to try and address areas where they believe that, uh, activities that are created, I'd rather costs that are created by optional activities by people uh, should be funded through a fee. That's the general concept, I think, here. Uh, and some of those fees are really not meeting the cost, so. It's, it's the management staff and the, and the folks who are doing this stuff every.
Well, I, I appreciate the work that you've done, and I also appreciate, uh, the chairman saying that, uh, we're here to reflect, but we will not vote on it tonight.
Other comments this night? We wrote there, David, write your reports, please.
Sure. Um, I have three comments that I want to make, uh, with respect to the report tonight. As always, of course, it's in the, uh, on the town's website. Uh, and, uh, both in my section of the website as well as the agenda, uh, for this evening, you'll see. Uh, and, uh, both in my section of the website as well as the agenda, uh, for this evening, you'll see the, uh, link to my report. Uh, one of the things I will mention, uh, there was a question or a reference made earlier to the ratings that were done of the private roads. Uh, that rating sheet is attached to the town manager's report, so anybody who's interested in seeing that could look at that. The rating of these roads was done in the same way that we rate, uh, town-owned roads. So consider it as you, as the, the top of the heading says, it's a zero to a hundred, so a seventy-five is a, is an okay road. Uh, the goal probably is going to, uh, for the town is probably gonna be in that somewhere in that low seventies range when you look at all ninety of our miles. Uh, so anyway, uh, that, uh, was in there, uh, based on comments and questions that were asked at the last council meeting. I'll also mention, uh, two other things, uh, related to paving. As we know, uh, Edgerton Street, or rather, uh, Route sixty-six is, is done in terms of its major paving activity. Uh, we all had to kind of suffer through that, and I appreciate the residents' patience as we did. Minor work left to be done there by the state. Uh, what that allows is that now we've moved on because we use the same paving contractor. Uh, they're now working on our Edgerton Street and the streets around that area, uh, to, to finish up that project. A longstanding project that's been going on. Those residents would be happy to know, as I said, I think, uh, last time we met, uh, that that project will get wrapped up here in the next couple of weeks. And we will, uh, not be in there to harass them, so to speak, with, uh, construction work for some time. Uh, also, in terms of construction work coming up, it is the season. Uh, so we'll be moving immediately, uh, to, uh, some additional paving, milling and paving work, uh, in the area near the high school. Uh, those roads fared very badly over the winter. Uh, we had some significant impacts uh, and we're beginning to see ravelling or, or, uh, pulling apart of the asphalt surface in that area. Uh, so rather than let it get bad, uh, to the point where we have to do some major reconstruction, we're gonna get up there sooner rather than later and do some work there. Those residents have been informed, uh, both the ones on the street as well as the neighborhood in general have been informed of our plan. Uh, so, uh, hopefully that'll go smoothly. Uh, it probably shouldn't, uh, disrupt too much traffic around the high school because it's not a lot on those main roads and we'll work to stay off of the two main wrench, entry roads for the high school during that time, so. Uh, that's upcoming. As I said, the rest of it's in the, in the paper document. I'll certainly answer any questions.
Questions for town manager? Hearing none?
Thank you.
Point is.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the tax refund for the amount of seven hundred and fifty-six dollars.
A second of that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It brings back the public remarks. Please come up, say your name, address, and get three minutes for comments.
Hi, I'm Danielle Soretney. I live at sixteen, uh, Fernwood Drive. Um, I wanted to come up to say thank you guys, I think, for, um, sort of supporting our education budget. Um, there was obviously a lot of commentary tonight that made it really hard as a resident to fully understand what is going on. So, um, just, I would hope that before the next meeting, there maybe be a little more discussion and maybe air some of the grievances because I know as a taxpayer, I'm a little mind-blown today about what occurred. I think it was really inappropriate. Um, so I hope that next time, as I'd love to commend you on supporting the education budget, I'm also a little shocked and appalled at the way in which it went down. Um, yeah, so as an S L P and an educator, please continue to support the budget because your teachers deserve that, your students deserve that. And I'm cool with paying that extra hundred and eighty, hundred and seventy-seven, whatever it is, because, I mean, you do pay for what you, you get what you pay for, so I'd like to pay for something good. So respectfully, thank you. Have a great night.
Hello, good evening. Kirk Mesky, Wapawagro. I just want to follow up on the tenants for the, uh, police department. I realize the funding wasn't there, but structurally, I think it's very important to put those tenant in for two reasons. One is when you have any internal complaints or external complaints, the lieutenant would be in charge. And the first appeal would go to the chief, so it would be all internal. Otherwise, right now, any appeal with the chief goes to administrative proceedings or to court. So you wanna internalize that, where you get the police department to take another review of things. And then, uh, before it goes outside of the town. So that would be the only thing I would suggest is, I don't know how it goes structurally, but I do think it's very important to have a tenant to keep it in a structure because it reduce, significantly reduces risk and liability to the town, a lot more than twenty-five thousand dollars.
Tim Happy, thirty-seven Fern Lane. So I'll ask again, um, now that you've passed the ordinance on the private road maintenance, when will the assessment work be completed? And when can we expect to see some more concern? Can, can, I mean, is it reasonable for me to ask that? We've been here, I believe this is, uh, eight or nine meetings now. So could somebody please just let us know when we can get some relief on our road? Please. I appreciate it. Thank you.